Thank you. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, January 22, 2020. Could I have the roll call, please?
Peg Coniff.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Bill Lynch. Tom Peake. Dan Rist.
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Here.
Owen Zera.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our individual with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 2nd?
So moved.
Taken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other further discussions? Motion passes. Motion for the -- to approve the minutes of January 8th.
I'll move that.
I move second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I am abstaining from the January 2nd one.
Yes, and you abstained, correct, from January 2nd.
Well, I was here for some.
No, you weren't.
Oh, January 2nd.
Yeah, yeah. At this time, I'd like to ask anyone who has anything to say from the public to come up to the podium to speak to anything that is not on our agenda this evening.
I don't get to the podium.
Yes, you do.
Yes.
State your name and your address, please.
Hi. My name is Pamela Mutsuta Dunn, and I live at 180 Pleasant Street. And I came here to talk about the H-2810 carbon tax initiative, which you probably heard about. It's in the TUE Transportation Utilities and Energy Commission right now. And we're trying to get all the municipal leaders to sign on to this, so I'd love to have all of you guys, including some that are absent, some of which I've heard of you -- heard you speak at Arcadia last September before the election. And I was really impressed with the commitment of the council to, and the city of East Hampton to, you know, climate initiatives. And Nicola Chappella signed on to it, and Lindsay has signed on to the municipal leader thing, and I'd love to have all of you sign on to it. I could send you -- some of you I've already emailed, and there's a long Google Doc link to sign on to. But the thing that I think this is going to be a really good one for East Hampton, because one of the things about this bill that is it plays well with the TCI bill and Regi, and it also, there's a climate -- there's a social justice element to that, so that it collects 16 cents for every ton of -- for every gallon of -- from the fuel companies. And that money is collected, and it goes back, let me see, 30% of it goes back to a green infrastructure fund. And of that, 40% goes to low-income families. So while we're gonna -- the tax is gonna go to the big gas companies, but the money will go back to the individuals for whom it's gonna be the most difficult to shoulder those costs. So very poor people, also people in rural areas who have to travel more and spend more money on gas, that'll come back. For the very poorest families, they'll get an average of $2.87 back for every dollar increase in their gas, so it'll be helpful for that. And a lot of the money goes back to also the city. It'll -- cities, and we can apply, East Hampton can apply for grants to help infrastructure. I know there's a middle school thing happening, and people want it to be greener, but there's the expenses an issue for us. So I'd love it if you could sign it, and I'll send you guys emails. You'll sign it? Thank you.
I signed it already.
All right. I have the president of the city council. If I get all of you, it would be a really strong showing for East Hampton.
Do you have it with you?
Yes.
You want to pass it along?
The thing I have with me right now is, we're trying to get individuals to sign emails. So one of the things that we did is to -- we sent out the bill and all the points, and then in blue, we gave -- made it easy for people to answer questions about how it would specifically benefit them. So depending on their individual circumstances, I think we would get it.
Thank you. I got an extra.
Oh.
Thanks.
So he'll be here. So, and also, on the bill.
Yeah, yeah. But they're not here, so.
You can give them to me, and I'll get them to you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I don't have a lot. I'll make copies. Just make sure they get it.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Anyone else? Sir? State your name and your address, please.
Mr. Mayor. My name is Joseph Barrick Senior. I'm -- live at 50 Line Street in East Hampton. One of several issues. I'll try and keep it as short as I can, and bear with me, because I have a slight anxiety disorder. All right. One of the things that I'd like to bring up, and hopefully the mayor may be able to address this either now or later in the future. The monies that are being generated from the marijuana establishments, X amount of dollars is coming into the city. I know it's not nowhere near quite as much as our sister city of North Hampton is receiving, but in time that should increase. Now, my understanding is that money is to go into the general fund. And I have a problem with that, that if that money goes in to the general fund, it can be utilized for whatever. The hiring of another police officer, or fireman, or whatever. I'd like to see that that money could be earmarked towards the tax increase, and especially for those that are already qualified under the financial guidelines and age and stuff like that, so as to help them be able to still stay in their homes. We have the override for the school, which is, we need the school. One of my other concerns is, though that school is not built as with the high school, I kind of feel, this is personal, and is not to be detrimental about any of the employees, but we need a little bit more comprehensive maintenance program. Some things that within the old high school wasn't addressed, and they just perpetrated, perpetrated, on and on and on. And the same thing with the middle school. And had some of those maintenance issues been addressed and not put on the back burner, I'm not saying that we still want to need the new school, middle school, but could have been a little later down the road, but I'd definitely like to see something in place, that the funding is there when we have certain conditions that come up. And hopefully, this is just a side joke, we don't put in a swimming pool in our new school.
It's not.
Because of the maintenance, you know, for getting. The other thing I'd like to address on a little bit more of a serious note, and I have a understanding that this issue what I'm about to raise kind of fell through the cracks. But we all knew we were getting a tax increase, okay? But what we didn't know, and I, along with a lot of other of your constituents, got sticker shock, is that the fact that the assessments on our property went up at the same time. So it was like a double whammy, and we have to pay more, all right? We should have had some sort of information, or transparency, or whatever, to acknowledge that prior to this increase, or along with this increase. There again, it goes back to the elderly. You know, I mean, you don't have to be a financial wizard or a rocket scientist to figure out that if you're on a fixed income, and a lot of these people are receiving less than $1,000 a month, and you take what we have to pay in taxes, or all of us have to pay in taxes, city sewers and water, which got increased in the last couple of years, and homeowners' insurance, and we'll dis -- we won't even count electricity or heat, and you divide that, say, for easy figures, say, on average, is $7,000 to $8,000 a year. Divide that by 10, even if their houses paid for, you're looking at $700, $800 a month. What, you know, where -- what are we to do? Are we gonna follow the path of North Hampton, where we can't have affordable housing? I know we're working on the affordable housing, but people can't afford these increases all the time. Whatever we can possibly do, I think what we should look at it now, before we price ourselves out of there. East Hampton is up and coming, no question about it. It's a very desirable city to live in. And I'm proud to say that I'm living here now, rather than my own hometown of Hamp. But I've seen what's happened there. I think everybody here has seen what's happened there. This is a valid concern, something to think about now, not six months, a year, two years from now. That's -- and then, I guess this one should be addressed to the school committee, that I know they do practice cursive somewhat, but it's millimall. I'd like to see that expanded to a few other grades. What are these kids supposed to do today? I mean, it's bad enough you have people this close, and when they don't talk, they text. You know? And then it's like, what are we supposed to do? Go back to the 1800s? You mark your X because they don't know how to do cursive? Give me a break. I just, I can't see how that's gonna cost. It may have to cost a little bit, and administrative things, I'm shuffling things around a little bit. You know, why just one grade? Why only 15 minutes? Make it for all the grades in those schools, till they get to high school, so at least they know how to sign their name for their license, or to pay their taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay. It's pretty much time now to open the public hearings. I'll take a motion to open the public hearings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings are open. First thing we have on the agenda is, we have several supplemental appropriations, and I will turn it over to the chair of the finance committee, Council Rist.
Thank you, Madam President. First item up for is a supplemental appropriation for $182,000. It is basically to catch up on premiums that we needed to pay for the 32B medical insurance. We've fallen -- we've had to pay this every year. If we pay, and I'm asking the auditor if she has, if I am incorrect with this, but as I recall at the meeting, we discussed the fact that this is something we always pay at the end of the year, or with free cash. If we pay this now, it should be in the budget, and we won't have to pay it again, but we have to pay it because it's a premium. If we don't pay the premium, we lose our insurance, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Val, but the other thing to tell you was that Counselor Lynch wanted to find a -- another way to pay for this other than free cash, but he was unable to do so because he had the wrong budget year, where he thought there might be some interdepartment transfers for it. But anyway, it is a premium increase which we have to pay for, and it should alleviate having to do this again next year. We've done it in the previous years. I'll open the floor to questions. I don't know if anybody -- the auditor is the one who knows most about this. Anybody have any questions for the auditor? Anybody from the public, if you want to say something, you have to go to the podium
My quick question to the auditor would be that, I know, like, when I get my auto insurance, and I deal with Geico, but if you pay it all at once, they give you a break. So I don't know if that works the same way.
Well, Val, now you have a question. It's a good question. Do we get a break? The question is, do we get a break if we pay this upfront? I mean, I don't know. How we end up paying our insurance?
Yeah, it doesn't work that way, because a portion of it is paid by the employees, so that money is withheld from their paychecks. At the end of the month, that money, plus the city's expense, is put together, and it pays for the next month's bill.
So we can't pay it all?
And what this is, is for years and years, in June, there wasn't enough left over to pay the July bill in June, so they put it off, and they paid two bills in July every year, for years and years and years. And we're supposed to pay it prior to the month, so we're late every July. So this is to catch up once and for all. It was supposed to be fixed in last year's budget, and the money wasn't there to add it in. So this is to catch us up once and for all, and from going forward, we'll be able to pay the insurance on time every month.
Thank you. You're eloquent, as opposed to myself. Any other questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, I will make a motion. I move that the city council approve the following appropriation. The amount requested is $182,000. The amount is to come from free cash, $182,000, to the active school 32B expense, $134,000, to the active city 32B expense, $48,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide for employer's share of health insurance to end -- to end the fiscal year.
Does anyone have a second?
Second.
I just want to note that, as you can see, we pay a large amount of this is for the school employees, so we are paying the school employees' health insurance.
So we have a motion as second to appropriate $182,000 from free cash to the 32B expenditures. Any further discussion? Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. The, we know how much you -- what is the balance of the free cash account?
We hear that.
Now, before taking of the appropriation tonight?
I wrote that down. I'm gonna have to -- Jen's not here. We are allowed by new rules, we put this rule in, so we can ask employee staff members questions. Val, do you have an answer to that? If you don't?
$1 million is of last Wednesday.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
One million flat?
Yeah, well, ish.
Never mind.
One million.
And change.
Okay, thank you.
As of last Wednesday, anyway.
Do you have a more accurate?
Updated number? Well, the actual amount is...
Prior to these expenditures?
Yeah, the problem is, we have a few in the system, so... It is 1 million something-ish.
I don't want to create, but I just want to know.
Right.
That's a good question. We asked the same question.
But we have, I would say, with all of the requests that are in the system, if they all go through, it's getting down to 500, 400,000.
That's after all of these.
Everything. There's a couple I have that are not submitted yet, that came from DPW, that are gonna be submitted.
And that is, if we all approve all those numbers tonight, from free cash, all the appropriation?
No.
If we approve that, the end balance is gonna be 500,000 and something?
No, no, no. The balance is 1 million something, and I wrote it down and can't find it right at the moment. But if you approve this, then it's just gonna be 1 million whatever minus the 182,000.
Okay.
The actual is 1 million and something.
And, if I might.
Counselor Rist?
Also, she's saying that there are some in the pipeline that we don't have yet, that will reduce that about the $500,000 figure when all of those come through. Okay? Next.
Yeah. Oh, here it is. $1,063,149.
Two cents.
$1,063,149. So if you subtract out...
63,000.
1,063,149.
Good about my number. Counselor present?
I have a quick question for Val, since you're back up here. So the 182,000 is a monthly figure?
No, it's a one-time.
It's a one-time payment?
Yes, that's it.
And you said we run generally one month behind at the end of the year?
Yes.
How, what's the monthly rate, on average, for employer's share of health insurance premiums?
I don't know that offhand.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty good. It's a pretty good size. I mean, you know, the city's paying a pretty big percentage of the health insurance.
How close is it to the 182,000?
There are four different categories, and with all four categories, that's probably maybe a half a month or something for the city's share. I don't know, because we, we calculated the whole year and divided it up and figured out, there are four line items, and we figured out exactly what needs. Some of the line items had extra in them, so that's the net amount of what's needed between the four line items.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same motion passes.
The next appropriation is for 17,000. I gotta find that one. This appropriation was for the amount needed to cover the expense of a collective bargaining agreement with the DPW supervisors. They got a -- oh, I was supposed to get the percentage. Do you know that, Maryette? What was the contract percentage increase for the DPW supervisors? I had asked that at the meeting, and I...
Yeah.
I forgot to follow up with you.
I thought the DPW staff was going to get it with Emily from personnel.
I forgot to follow up with them. Anyway, it's, we've been doing around 1% or 2% increases periodically, so I imagine it's in that range. Anyway, this is a negotiation, and this is what's needed to cover us for the remainder of the year for this, am I correct, the remainder of the year for this increase in their collective bargaining agreement.
Okay. May I speak to the issue? Anyone from the public?
Anybody from the public, the union?
No.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you, Mayor.
Could I just add to the reference? So this, this amount also, a part of the reconfiguration of the salary, had to do with the Collins Report, and actually put in the, into their salaries, amounts of money that they used to get as stipends. So we, they know what they're gonna make every year, and not be so reliant on overtime or whatnot, and, and goes forward with more the nature of their duties, which as a supervisor, they see pretty important functions and have quite a good-sized team. So this is a part of the pay plan, getting, in the Collins Center report, getting people on, on par. And, you know, clearly, we have, I guess, across the city government, you know, municipal employees are very difficult to come by, and we've got a town, town fifteen. No others.
Counselor Rist?
So, that's important information. So these kinds of changes, where stipends are in the salaries, do you expect that you can do that with the other collective bargaining units as they come up for renewal, or you don't know?
I mean, this is such a specialized unit. It's three members, and, and the duties and technical level of their jobs kind of stand, I mean, that's why they're their own union.
That's why they have stipends.
Yeah, so, I mean, for other positions or collective bargaining agreements, one, the other side has to be open to that, but I, you know, candidly can't say that, that it should work that way. You know, we're, we're starting negotiations with the DPW labors and with fire, and those are such different contracts and positions.
Okay.
Not sure.
All right.
All right.
I will make a motion for supplemental appropriation for 17,233 dollars, from free cash, $6,930, to highway salary, from retained earnings, $10,303, to water salary, $2,695, to sewer salary, $2,695, and to wastewater salary, $4,913. The amount requested for the following purpose, to provide funds for the recently negotiated collective bargaining DPW agreement for the East Hampton Supervisors Association, Unit B. Second?
Motion is second for the appropriation for the DPW contract, Unit B. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same motion passes.
The next one is rather critical, and unfortunately, our DPW director is on vacation this week, which was probably planned a while ago, but I think I've got a lot of information that I can pass along to you. In June, an outflow pipe failed from the wastewater treatment plant. We have two outflow pipes. One goes 11,000 feet from the wastewater treatment plant to the Connecticut River. That's the main pipe, and it has failed. A secondary pipe, which is now being used solely, is the outflow pipe that goes to the Manhan River. Now, that will cover us until the spring rains. When we have spring rains and spring snow melt, that Manhan River outflow pipe will be overflowing. The DEP is extremely concerned. They have been on the director to get this fixed sooner than later. Our retained earnings, which is similar analogous to free cash in the enterprise account, was not certified until late this year, and until it was certified, we couldn't pay for the construction. Now, DPW did pay out of operating funds, $18,000 for the Phase 1 design, and this particular appropriation will pay that back to the operating funds, as well as pay for the Phase 2 design and the actual construction. The DEP, Joe categorized this as extremely urgent. The DEP will fine us $20,000 a day if it's not fixed soon. So the word urgent is an understatement. I think I've said it, repaying the operating budget, so I think I've gone over this. Now, I know I sent out to you the Tiguan Bond report. This particular item was not on a list of critical items to be repaired, because it had to be inspected. They did have some narration in their report to have this inspected, and then it went ahead and failed. Now, part of this particular contract will be to have this entire pipe inspected. Now, remember, we're fixing 200 feet, and the pipe is 11,000 feet. I'm a little worried that they're gonna find some other X sections of pipe that need to be repaired, but they won't know until they inspect it. And part of the sewer recommendations from Tiguan Bond was to look at both of the outflow pipes to see what was wrong. If the Manhan one failed, the Connecticut one could handle everything. They only use the Manhan, I believe, when we have a large amount of water in the system from stormwater, so. I think I've done a pretty good job on answering these questions. Unfortunately, the director isn't here. I hope I can, oh!
You're the engineer.
Oh, well, good. I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you. The city engineer is here to answer questions. Thank you for being here. How did I do?
Good.
Okay. I don't know if anybody has questions for the city engineer, but I would prefer you ask him, other than me.
Although you did a nice job.
I did bad.
Any questions? Counselor Kuzinski?
While you're here, that'd be great.
If you could step up to...
State your name. That's your job.
Dan Ruffey, city engineer.
Dan, thank you for being here with us. Just a quick question, since Counselor Rist brought it up, you didn't happen to go look at any parts of the outflow pipes. They're all underground now, there's no breakout anywhere?
No, I don't...
Except for the section that we're, the 200 feet we're repairing?
Now it's dry.
The rest of it's clear? We're gonna cross our fingers and hope for the best? Nobody's sent any scopes down there?
Well, we TV'd in the area where we had the failure, so we did TV all through that section.
TV?
And right now, the pipe's completely dry, because we're sending all the flow to the other pipe, so obviously...
Dan, can you explain what you mean by TV?
Well, TV, television inspection, just go inside, go inside the pipe and look.
And, as I understand it, I think I stated, part of this appropriation is to have them look at the entire pipe.
This appropriation?
That's what Joe said to us, didn't he? I'm pretty sure he said that.
I don't think this appropriation. This appropriation covers design, design, construction, and...
Well, I thought he said that, but, okay. Because of the opportunity, the fact that it's dry, that we might be able to do that, I guess, but...
Sure.
I guess we'll get clarity on that when he comes back from vacation. I thought he mentioned that at our meeting.
I could be mistaken, but as far as I know, the budget doesn't include that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do you have anything to add that wasn't covered? You feel that was important?
Uh, let's see, we have a natural heritage permit that we got issued, there's muscles down in the area, so we have to be careful of them. Let's see. Just one, one thing I'll say, is... Just one thing I'll say, is we had an outfall pipe, one section, and in the other section, there was actually a culvert underneath the outfall pipe that had slipped and failed, so we're repairing that and a head wall as well as part of this work. I think that's it.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public have any comments?
What?
Joe?
Sorry, that's the rule. For the microphone, for the speaker, for the public.
On the TV inspection, how far can you go, the entire length?
From manhole to manhole. I think you can go up to about six hundred feet.
This is eleven thousand?
No, I know, so you'll go from manhole to manhole, to manhole, to manhole, go in both directions, and take some time.
All right. Well, be good to know if it's, you know...
Thank you. Anything else? Okay.
Okay, I'll make the following appropriation. I move that the city council approve a supplemental appropriation for two hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars to be transferred from retained earnings, to be transferred to eighteen thousand dollars, the count, that's for design, eighteen thousand, seven hundred dollars for design, and two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, two hundred and forty-eight, one hundred dollars, I believe, for Phase Two design and construction. The amount requested for the following purpose: for the design oversight and repair of the sewer outfall line from the wastewater treatment plant to the Connecticut River. Second?
Motion is second for the repair of the outfall line. Any questions, discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same motion passes.
Thank you, Dan. The last item on our agenda, I'm going to turn over to the chief, he's here, Chief Basically, this is covering expenses, especially overtime, that usually come this time of year. And rather than muddy it up, I'm going to ask Dave to explain it, whatever details you feel are appropriate, Dave.
Good evening, councilors, Dave Mottar, Fire Chief. So, I'll hit the big one first, the overtime, because I know that's always everybody's favorite. The shortfalls this year, another year that, you know, the perfect storm. I had two firefighters who, last year, prior to the fiscal year, had been activated with the guard, they were gone for nine months. Three months of that was in this fiscal year. I've had one firefighter out on extended illness since July, again, unanticipated. And then, one of the new firefighters was at the Fire Academy, so I had four firefighters gone for an extended period of time to start the fiscal year off. Always a great way to go. The budgeted amount was set with hopes that we would get the federal staffing grant, they would be in place, however, the federal government shut down, threw that whole grant process off. So, these firefighters won't provide us any relief on overtime this fiscal year. They're scheduled to start the Fire Academy in April, graduate the last week of June, July 1st, they'll start. So, next fiscal year, we'll see relief in the overtime line item. This year will not. The other lines, the fifty-one-eleven, which is full-time regular, the sixteen thousand, that's to cover the city's share of the four firefighters on the grant. That is from, they start March 1st through July 1st. That is our share of the grant for this year. The problem with the grant is, the grant years are not going to line up with our fiscal years. I spent half a day today trying to figure out, for next year's budget, how much of the grant, because the grant year, the first two grant years is a twenty-five percent match. That's easy. Year three, it changes, so that won't be my problem, but trying to figure that out so that the city's share is met. Fire holiday pay, again, that's to cover the city's match for the four firefighters. Uniform allowance, that's to put the new firefighters in uniform, buy them their work uniforms, dress uniforms, per the current collective bargaining agreement. Fifty-two, forty-three, radio, telephone, and communications, that covers half of the code-red cost. I don't know if Counselor Riss, Counselor Connaught, if you've got the email?
Yeah.
I've sent Dan the...what is it? It's eighty-four hundred dollars a year?
That's the total for the whole year.
Total for the year. The use data that he requested is easy to get this year, per call. So, every time a message goes out, I have to open up the history, see that it sent out seven hundred emails, thirty-two hundred text messages, so that's about thirty pages for the last two years. I started going through that to get it. We had, we talked about per use, we had one per use. The mayor was in the learning curve and was doing a test with City Hall, sent it as a non-emergency. I explained to them that the mayor was just learning the system, didn't realize that we pay for those. She's human, we make mistakes. I didn't teach her any better, and they're like, "Okay, we feel bad for you. You're sticking up for your mayor, you must be a good guy." So, they waived that. That was like a forty-dollar charge for one non-emergency text to the city, the employees of fifty pacing.
Wow.
So, to the employees?
Yeah, because the mayor set up a group to notify city fifty pacing employees through code-red. And, so, they've been good. We have not had a surcharge this year for non-emergency text messages, or notifications. Five-four-three-nine, fire building, that is to purchase necessary furniture and modifications needed for living quarters for the four new firefighters. So, when the fire station was built, there was six bedrooms. Two of them were oversized to allow for two firefighters to be in there. So, this will put, will take one of those to ensure firefighter privacy, because we don't know who's working when, and with two female firefighters, there will be eight-foot office partitions separating the two. So, it's for the office partitions, bed, lockers, and a nightstand. Repairs the vehicles. This year, as in many others, the fleet continues to break at alarming rates. Every year, the ladder truck goes out for a recertification. They do the annual inspection on the entire ladder part of the truck, and then a whole truck. This year, it went down there, that's usually about twelve hundred dollars, well, six thousand dollars later worth of repairs. It came back. Year-to-date, over eighty-eight hundred dollars in repairs to fire vehicles, and I have three pending on Engine One, and I think that'll be it right now. Once I get this, I'll be able to finish it. SCBA maintenance repairs, again, that's to buy the four air masks for the four new firefighters. We don't share masks. One, it's a hygiene thing, especially this time of year. If my replacement has the flu and didn't wipe it down, and I forget to wipe it down, now I've got the flu. Plus, we found that if each firefighter has their own mask, they take care of it better. They put it in a protective bag, so it tends to last longer. Fifty-five, ninety-five, fire equipment, that is to put the four new firefighters in new gear head to toe. That is a partial. The remainder of the balance will come from a capital that was approved last year. So, instead of coming back for the full amount for all four, the majority of it is coming out of a capital project that was approved and funded, and then the thirty-eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven is a supplemental. And finally, the in-state travel, that is to cover the cost to send the four new firefighters to the academy in Springfield, and that's, those reimbursements are set by the current collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you, Chief.
Just a comment, we asked this, the elephant in the room, what happens when the grant runs out in three years? We'll cross that bridge when we come to it. It's going to be difficult to maintain these. I hope we can't, because I'd rather pay firefighters than pay overtime. It's always been a bone in my contention for me, so I'd like to see that, but we don't know what's going to happen in three years, but this grant is for only three years. You look, am I stating something wrong, Mayor?
I'd just like to editorialize. Just an editorial note. So, one, Chief Mottar and I went back and forth on this grant, and what we thought was reasonable. It's always tricky with these grants, and police have, you know, tried, and the budget went south. But with the savings of overtime, we feel reasonable, and I certainly wouldn't have applied for such a complicated grant unless I had a good faith effort that we would be able to maintain. And we've seen other fire departments in Western Mass actually not have to. Four are big, but it's also a shift in the way thinking of how the fire department runs and overtime, and so we feel...
I'm very happy to hear that. We're optimistic we can retain them, then.
Yes, I mean, to apply for a grant and to get four people, only to tell them in three years, you probably don't have a job. I don't know who would apply.
That's true.
I guess. Or civil service, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That helps.
Counselor Cludinsky?
Just a quick numbers question. If we're taking on four new people, there's a grant, we have a small contribution on our end, there'll be some savings in overtime. Was there a projected number for that amount of savings?
Savings in overtime?
Yeah, for the annual, for the annual expense, which might translate to you're coming back here a little less often, or maybe not at all.
Also, I can promise you this...
Not you.
Be back here asking for overtime money again. That is my promise to you.
That's a good promise. You can make that promise. But how much is the...
So, I haven't finished the numbers for next year, when, in developing the grant, sitting with the mayor and the former finance director, the first two years, the savings in overtime would have covered our share of all the items I need. Holiday pay, college incentive, all of that would have been covered by the savings in overtime. I don't want to jinx the next person, but my projections right now is overtime for the fire department for the year comfortably will be less than a hundred thousand. I think it's going to be a lot less than that, but I don't want to jinx the department, because the minute that happens, eight people will fall down on the ice storm this weekend.
Right, and I would also say that this has all been managed by Chief Mottar, I mean, with the military leave, I mean, the, you know, and the injuries, so, I don't know, knock on presswood, you know, that's not going to happen.
Counselor Peake?
But, just to clarify, the idea is then that we're hoping that the amount that's in the budget for overtime will cover it, and that there won't be a free cash situation like this next year with the addition of the four?
Yes, that is the hope. That's the strategy.
Just one more comment. I guess my hope would be that there could maybe be a rollover savings in not using certain overtime monies, or not using as much, and then use those funds toward paying future...
My plan, and I say...
They would be available in the overall budget of the city.
I haven't finished, that's the one, the first line item I'm working on already for next year's budget, is an overtime projection. I don't think, it'll reduce that line item. I think this year, it's funded at a hundred and fifty thousand. I'm guessing I'm going to put in around a hundred thousand for next year, and that fifty thousand isn't going to be mad money. That'll probably be coal erases, or maintenance costs, something. I don't think it's going to be mad money where I'm going to be able to, you know, cut fifty thousand out of my total budget all at once, but it won't be in that particular line item.
Thank you.
Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, President. I just want to make a comment, and is, when Fire Chief Dave said he's not coming back again to ask for overtime money, it's because he's going to retire. Just to be sure, I just want everybody to know that.
Well, I'll be back in two weeks to ask for more money.
Yeah, for overtime money. And that's the reason that he said he's not coming back for that.
Thank you for the clarification.
There was an inside joke.
All right. Any comments from the public? Okay, Dan?
Hearing none, I make a motion to the full council approve a supplemental appropriation of two hundred and two thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-one cents to be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to various accounts for the purpose of, one, fire full-time regular, sixteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents, fire overtime, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, fire holiday pay, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents, fire uniform allowance, three thousand, six hundred dollars, fire radio, telephone, and other communication, four thousand, eight hundred dollars, fire build, fire building equipment and repair and maintenance, three thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, repairs to vehicles, two thousand, five hundred dollars, SCBA maintenance and repair, one thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars, fire equipment, three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars, in-state travel, six thousand, five hundred dollars, for a total of two hundred and two thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-one cents.
We have a motion, a second, to have an appropriation for the fire department for the various accounts previously mentioned. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same motion passes.
Madam President, I move the public hearings to be closed. Second?
A public hearing, motion to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on, we have communication from elected official boards and committees. Any announcements?
From the city clerk regarding elections, the early vote will be February 24th to 28th for the presidential primary and state, I'm sorry, for the March 3rd presidential primary and special state primary, you can early vote, February 24th to 28th. Also, deadline to register to vote is February 12th, and absentee ballots are now available for the presidential primary, not the state primary yet. Am I reading that right? Okay. That's all I have.
Anything else? All right. We have no correspondence that I'm aware of, so we'll move right into mayor communications. Mayor LaChapelle?
I'll just add to something around elections and make sure folks know, we really need election poll workers, and I just found out you don't have to live in East Hampton to do, but there is a process and an application, and Barbara would welcome talking to anyone for that, so I encourage that. So, this evening, what to start with? One, just a point of information, and I know that this up at the school website or whatnot, we are doing some traffic, detouring around the new school project, where only one of the roads going in and out will be used for outgoing traffic, and the in going in will be Button Road down by Riverway, and then over the emergency exit. So, we're looking at buses and parents coming through there to drop off, and then they go up one of the driveways to get out. So, that, there was a coffee information hour today with the superintendent. Our public safety team has reviewed, as well as the contractor and Collier International, who are project managers of how that can work, and we can keep everyone safe along the, where students and parents walk and bike, there'll be jersey barriers, and not just fencing to make sure that you can access the school by foot or on bike safely.
Does that start?
It's starting now. I don't believe, they're putting up fencing, you know, Fontaine, our general contractor, is really taking advantage of the weather, and want to get this set up as soon as possible so they can get things in place. I said, as I said, this is on the school, the school project page, and on the school page, and we'll post it on the website. I just got the finalized plan, I just, you know, this is the picture for it, just for information.
Mayor, can I just remind people that for voting, this will also be the way that we'll have to go?
Yes.
Voters will need to go down Button Road.
Right. And this traffic pattern is, right, it's for voting, but it's also seven days a week. So, it's not on the weekend or school vacation, it reverts back. This is, this will be, they're assigned for the beginning, we'll have some police detail out there and signage, but yes, point well taken. For elections, we are going down Button Road and across Riverway to get to Whitebrook, and then going up to Park Street.
Just a quick question, has there been any other specific information delivered to the residents of these streets?
Yeah.
Aside from our postings on websites?
A letter.
A letter.
So, we, yeah, so a letter went out last... So a letter went out last week to let everybody know and explaining what it is and with the contact to get ahold of Dr. Leclair with comments and concerns and contacts for the Collier team.
So everybody on Treehouse Way, in addition to...
Button Road.
Bun Road, Riverway, and the folks who live at Treehouse.
Yeah, and that's where the meeting was today, and they got notices. The Treehouse leadership team took care of the renters to make sure, you know, they had, yeah, letters.
Might come as quite a shock, I'm sure, to someone if they weren't made aware.
Right. And I forgot this, I was on the zoning board of appeals when this was approved, and actually Judy Coferton, the developer with Beacon Communities, actually a part of that was an agreement or a notice that at some point this might happen with the new school, that the emergency way and gate would need to be used for access other than like a fire or police truck, which I completely forgot until Judy brought it up. And she's like, okay, we were ready, but still, letters went out, yes.
Could you make that document available to us? Is there a way for us to get a copy of that?
Yeah, I'm going to put it on the website, but I can also do a PDF.
Oh, thank you very much.
Yeah, this is the final plan. There were a couple of variations and they needed to be put.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think I, I don't, I don't remember. So, out of my office, we joined with EarthDay.org to be an official participant in Earth Day on April 22nd, where we're going to send out communications and get kind of a media kit for it. I would encourage, we have a very active environmental population here, if anyone has an Earth Day celebration or event, if they could let my office know, that would be great because we want to include it in the listing of what East Hampton is doing, and it doesn't have to be city, you know, sponsored, it can be one of our committees or another group like a Climate Action Now. So we're already soliciting, if people have plans for April 22nd Earth Day, if they get us the information, we can put the word out on their website and then also put a link on our website. I'll save the good news for last. Okay. This Wednesday, January 29th, here in these chambers, there'll be a public hearing for our 2020 application for the Community Development Block Grant, and we are eligible for up to $800,000 this cycle. The hearing is important because the public reviews with our consultants at PVPC as well as our planning staff, what is the priority. We have a list of priorities that are updated every year, we did this two years ago, and then in between, we kind of knock off the projects that we got done. The projects that we're really looking at and we feel we can get done and augment what we're doing already, actually harkens back to my State of the City, and it's about utility. These aren't sexy projects, but they're vital projects. The ones, while there are several, the ones we've really been researching and want to get specific public comment would be, one, to finish up the Charles Street Infrastructure Improvement Project, that's the fourth and final phase of what's called the Admiral Street Neighborhood Project. Another is a new city neighborhood planning study. We haven't paid a lot of attention to that area unless there's something broken, and we can get in there with this money and look at the aging public infrastructure, water sewer drainage, sidewalks are a big thing over there, and walking surfaces, they're in poor condition, they don't meet ADA, roadway surfaces, and it goes to, it collects data for a comprehensive plan, for the beginning of a comprehensive plan for that neighborhood around affordability and around what that area needs to support to just raise the quality of living, and we have a whole bunch of issues with those side streets, they're very narrow and with snow, they really can be a hazard to get through and what we can do with that. The other project we're looking at is the Housing Rehabilitation Project and seeking funding for that. It's been very popular, we have it now. It serves low and moderate income residents by creating safe and sanitary conditions and affordable housing. And it fixes building code violation, it updates antiquated or failed systems, weatherization, accessibility modification, hazardous material abatement, and other housing-related rehabilitation. This will be able to fund four to five residential units with up to $35,000 per unit, and the grant is fully forgivable for a 15-year deferred payment loan for owner occupants. Investor-owned units must contribute 25% matching funds. And then new, kind of riffing off of the Housing Rehabilitation Program, which has been super helpful to folks who want to bring up their rental units and have something affordable and also accommodating for those who have different mobility, is a project where it's called Aging in Place, and these grants provide up to 500, I'm sorry, $500,000. Ever since Counselor Riss said that number during finance, it just sticks in my head. Yeah. Provide grants up to $5,000 per qualified senior household to complete non-structural modifications, increasing health and safety, allowing seniors to remain living independently in their own homes. We're also looking as if if there's rental units and owner occupied, if the money can be applied there, we're not so sure in that, but we're looking at very specific improvements, installation of grab bars, door lever levels, slip-resistant stair treads, deadbolts, peephole, smoke and/or carbon monoxide detectors and other similar work. We are looking to expand that work, so that's, this is the community block development project that we've been looking at, and of course, there's public comment. Again, I'll say January 29th, 6:00 PM here, there's a snow date of February 6th at 6:00 PM. To have the public comment and understand the priorities and what we're working on now, but this list is long. I mean, the priorities that comes out of, you know, public hearings of where people are prioritizing for their, for the city and to the neighborhoods, but the Aging in Place program is just the beginning of us in, across departments, trying to put together a chain of services and helps for the elders who might need help with housing and care that just make a difference in their life, and you'll be hearing more about that in the coming months.
Mayor, excuse me, can I just ask a question on that?
Yeah.
So, when you say you're going to try to get a grant or that's part of the CDVG, if you get that money, is that then something where people would apply to get some of that money?
Yes.
And then you would prove it, and then they would be off to the races?
Yeah, and we do that now. There's actually, we would get assistance in doing that from PVPC as well as with the Housing Rehabilitation Project, GME oversees that stuff in the community block. It's a similar application.
Okay.
And then it's tracked and we have to report back to the state.
Thank you.
We, as a city, a city council body, and members of the general community, have been invited to participate in, on September 19th, 2020, at 2:00 PM in Fennel Hall, a very large, inclusive memory of the commemoration of Yom Ashona. It's 70 years, 75 years of liberation of the, of those in concentration camps, and also 25 years since the dedication of the New England Holocaust Memorial, and we're all invited, as well as member of the community, they're really looking to stretch across the state, and very symbolically, it is in Fennel Hall. So I'll scoot that along. If folks want a carpool or whatnot, contact my office, and we can try to put that together. It's going to be quite a ceremony. I now, actually, I'll do the good news. I heard from the trust, the Hampshire County Insurance Trust today, and the trust met, actually today, and there was a vote for the fiscal year 2021 health insurance premiums, and there will be no changes to the health insurance rate for FY 2021. Likewise, there are no changes to any copay or deductible. Nice.
Good. Can I join this insurance?
No. So anyways, moving, yes, question?
No.
Okay. And then going to my request to create two stabilization funds as well as a donation account. So to public comment around cannabis funds coming into the city, so there's a 3% excise tax that we get as the product is being sold, it's very similar to meals tax, and that goes into the general fund, and it has been extremely helpful for bridging the gap of costs that are going up and meeting our responsibility under collective bargaining agreements, getting us back on track and supplementing just upgrades throughout the general fund when you're looking at technology and you're looking at planning, but mostly just, every year costs more to do business as a city and any other business. That said, we get an impact fee, so that comes out of the host community agreement, and we negotiate what that percent will be or how that payment looks like. There's a bunch of different ways that you can do it, especially with the early host community agreements, and if we remember, Enza's agreement was one of the first in the state. That money needs to be related to impacts of the cannabis industry in the city, and within each host community agreement, it's defined, it's almost, it almost looks like buckets, right? So there's community education, there's public infrastructure, there's public safety, you know, and general impact around, you know, traffic or planning and making sure the applications are followed. I'm asking for that to go into a stabilization account, one, I want to ensure now and in future that that impact money follows the contract we negotiated, and one that is looked at by the Department of Revenue as well as the Cannabis Control Commission. We are right now, or have been asked to respond to now twice, a federal subpoena around these agreements and our interactions with the cannabis industry, we are one of several communities who have gotten that, and we've talked, we're waiting for a little more guidance from the commission, but I feel in anticipation for that impact fee coming in from Enza very soon, we would, we want it to go in the right place and to be available, you know, once it's certified, so, and not leave it in free cash. And a lot of other communities are doing this.
I have a question. So, we put this money into the stabilization account, and the theory and the practice being that it has to be used for specific things that that stabilization account is defined for. Is there a time limit wherein next fiscal year, if we haven't spent it and we're going to get another community impact fee, is there any opportunity for us to realize that we're not going to spend all that, that we don't have the community impact we need, to take some of that money out and reallocate it to another fund per city council voting? Could we do that?
I would be worried about violating the host community agreement, which is signed as a contract.
I wouldn't be worried. Understand.
And you stand here.
It's a whole different set of worries, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of my biggest reasons to doing that, those agreements, you know, are pretty specific. A lot of them are the same, but there's some language that has evolved because of other situations and, you know, the, like, DOR and the Cannabis Commission, more the commission have said, that's not really an impact.
Okay.
Question?
Counselor President?
Regarding the impact fee and the 3% collection on sales, let's call it, tax for a moment, excise tax.
Yeah.
What are those figures projected to be for the impact fee from Enza, and what were the collected amounts?
So we don't have the final, the last quarter, but from the first three quarters, we're looking at $410,000 and some change. And for the impact fee for Enza, their impact fee runs from the day they opened for a year later, so that last quarter, what we see in the impact fee for Enza will only go up to December 22nd. So, you know, we'll get a report from DOR of, this is what you got, I think last year we got it in February, and, but Enza's, after December 22nd, that impact fee starts, like, on the 23rd. So it doesn't run that last quarterly payment, it'll show more money than, that last quarter doesn't automatically get added into their impact fee.
So you're expecting a check for?
I don't know.
You don't know?
We haven't gotten, like, DOR hasn't released the amount for that last, you know, it's not long.
And there isn't a minimum based on what they've collected before?
I...
The impact fee is, could be a scale, could be something that goes up or down depending on sales?
It's 3%.
3% is the impact?
Yep, it's the same as the excise.
Same as that, okay, good.
So it'll be north of 410?
It'll be north of 410 this year.
Right, that was what we wanted, yeah.
Yes, and this is money, right, that we can't estimate, you know, it's one time, it lasts five years for each host community agreement, and who knows what will happen, you know, we have other dispensaries that are opening and the market definitely is shaking out a little bit, so, you know, I welcome every single dollar, but it's not something we're using for permanent things in the budget, that wouldn't be prudent.
Counselor Rolster?
Go ahead. I guess I just have a question about, you talked about the buckets, but can you give like a specific example, what, just what some, the impact you might go to, or that you've heard about other cities or talked about with other mayors?
Yeah, so, I mean, the big is, I mean, some of its, like, fire department, police department spend and have, continue to spend an extraordinary amount compared to other industries for inspections, you know, security and fire, there's very, you know, it's very detailed of what you have to do. Planning is, I mean, the amount of hours in planning and still continue today with each application is, I mean, it's close to a full-time equivalent of what we've done since they've opened, and remember, we've had to do all this work way before any of them opened, and we have three that we don't know if they will open, right? I mean, so that, you know, community education programs, so, like, almost the Healthy Youth Coalition and the Healthy Tobacco, the Tobacco Initiatives, we've moved the Healthy Youth Coalition grant into our health department and would be seeking some of that money to broaden community education. We have seen an uptick in cannabis use among youth, but also across all ages, and just being clear what the differences are and outreach, maybe programming for youth, you know, it's, so it's broad, but the bucket can be, the buckets can be very community-specific, and they should be, and that's my argument around that. But I still have to show an impact, like, I have to, you know, so, programming for the seniors and going back to, you know, are they, there were a couple of forums around medical and recreational and the different kinds, and that was very well received, and, you know, I don't think there's ever enough to do around that. I think that there's also with families and healthy choices and where cannabis fits into it, there's a need, there's an interest. A project near and dear to the 7th and 8th graders at White Brook School is more recreational opportunities around basketball and accessing gems, and, you know, I feel like I can make a good case for that, and that's on the list. Looking at traffic impact, so we're already moving with doing some feasibility studies around Ferry Street, Parsons and Emerald, and how to just correct what has always been not a great intersection and the traffic... the traffic impact on that road getting to Ensa's. It's intense. I mean, and so could we use that kind of money? Could I make that argument for South and Main? No, probably not. But I could.
So we put a recreational shop right there.
There was going to be.
Yeah. I was gonna say, yeah. Close.
Close enough.
Right.
That's too bad.
So, that sort of, I mean, that's kind of, I mean, the impact, sure, we need a lot of road improvements, but I have responsibility connected to that.
But I like the idea of thinking about things that are obvious, directly, like, you were saying, extra recreational activities for middle school kids, high school, elementary, things like that, that are, like, so clearly, directly, but clearly does impact.
Yeah. And we need to think about that going forward. I think on Route 10, too.
Yeah.
You know, in River Valley and the proposed shop, we, you know, the proposed R&amp;D at the Tasty Top property, Cook Building Supply, Liberty is almost open. And what, you know, we're watching the traffic and the flow there and, you know, what we could do or what we'll need to do there. So that's, that, jumping South and Main. So I emailed, I promised I would, and I forgot, I just emailed, so the intersection does qualify for a light. Paying for it is the trek. It's really expensive because the utility poles have to be used and be moved and rewired. But we, the good thing is, they gave us a lot of data. They gave us data on all four parts of that intersection. We don't have to do another traffic feasibility study with PVPC. So now it's just figuring out how to pay for it.
Okay. Counselor Derby?
So, Public Safety, last night, I had an idea. Because I was told that Union Street Lights were going to be at the intersection of Union and Cottage, were going to be taken down and new lights were going to be put up.
Uh huh.
And I think we should reuse and bring those over to the South Street, Main Street intersection. Because those lights are still in very good condition.
I'm all about reuse. The block there is the utility poles.
But there would be one less thing to pay for.
Yeah. No, exactly. No.
So maybe we should just put that on the plate and think about it.
If that's possible. I wouldn't have any block if it starts carving off. And just figuring out the poles, I mean, they're, it's amazing there hasn't, I mean, there hasn't been an accident taking. It's so close, you know.
Good idea, though.
Question? Yeah. Always good. Yes. So that, there, so that kind of, and then tax rate stabilization fund, you know, working with our auditor, Valerie, and I'm actually going to ask her to come up and describe the strength of this and what we can do with it. This kind of came out of my, you know, I would say frustration and desperation to figure out how to do something about the tax rate. The Department of Revenue has very specific exemptions. We can't create our own. And it can't be something that, you know, an exemption and we're going to give it to elderly or low income. If we're going to do something about the tax rate, it has to be for everybody. And a stabilization account created now, if in the future, there was free cash, I mean, there's no thing as extra cash, we always have things to spend it on, but given public will, if there is money in, you know, in the budget in free cash, it could be put into this and it would help the tax rate. Val, can you explain the details of this? I just want to make sure I get it right on the public record.
So whatever money that we vote from the stabilization, and it's a two-thirds vote by council, but you could, at budget time, vote money from stabilization into the budget process, and it would reduce the amount of money that needed to be raised by taxes. And actually, any money that goes into the revenue, even general fund revenue, does reduce taxes because the taxes are based on what we need for expenditures minus what our estimated revenue is. And then this, you know how we transfer money in from parking tickets and we have these little buckets where we transfer money in when we do the budget? Well, this would be another source and it would make the bottom line of the amount to be raised by taxes less. So it would reduce taxes for everyone across the board because you would be raising less money for taxes.
Good idea.
I have a question.
Oh, Counselor Derby.
Sorry. So is it, within this, if we establish this account, is this something that, say, in the future, a pilot agreement was reached with a certain entity, that they could donate money to this account, which would, could then be used to offset everybody's tax burden?
No, you can't.
Yeah.
No. You can't donate money to a stabilization fund.
Okay.
You can only vote it in from sources like free cash or wherever you have available monies. But a donation account, like the one the mayor's creating, does, in a roundabout way, reduce the tax rate also because those expenditures that are paid directly out of that donation account are expenditures that do not have to be in the budget and they don't have to be raised by taxes. So whatever you do, and the other stabilization also will lower the tax rate because if, this is only the first step. The second step, we have to pass a legislation that allows us to devote that stream of revenue directly to that stabilization. So this is just setting up the stabilization. And then we have to vote the year before it starts. So we have to pass this fiscal year a vote, accepting the mass general law that allows us to devote that stream of revenue to the stabilization account. And then, once it goes in that account and you vote it for purposes, say, for police impact or whatever, it also will reduce the amount of taxes to be raised because that money doesn't have to be appropriated in the budget. If that makes sense.
It does. Makes sense.
So we need to vote on this before the end of June?
Well, we're just establishing. We're asking to establish the stabilization right now. And we're not addressing funding or a source of revenue devoted to it. We're just establishing them. Then we have to request that you accept the mass general law that allows us to devote, the law says, not less than 25% of the revenue from that source. So you either can devote all of it or a percentage of it to that stabilization account.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I can't give enough credit to Val, our auditor, for working through this and really paying close attention to what the Department of Revenue, you know, allows us to do and how we can port out. Again, not a, not a super sexy way to lessen the impact of tax increases, but something that I see them, you know, I asked for the approval for all three. I'll explain the last one in a sec. Because they're just good tools to have in the toolbox. And it also will give us something that's already established, you know, that we can use going forward. Especially with the community, community host agreement impact fees, you know, we just know they're not forever and ever. And they have, you know, a definition that they must be used by. So the last one is a donation account that we're putting together. Val asked me to put on my thinking cap about the budgets and what, outside of staff and things we had to pay for, like, what was a line item that if we could decrease something we're really struggling with? And it's utilities. And while we're making small inroads around EV chargers and different improvements of city buildings, we're looking at, you know, utility bills that are high. I mean, our buildings aren't, this building is not getting younger and the HVAC is very old. And it's very difficult to think about doing this building over before looking at other buildings like wastewater, like the Council on Aging. You know, they take priority with this. Donations from really unspecified sources can go into it. It would be used specifically to reduce our utility cost and something that is, you know, more sustainable going forward. And, I don't know, I guess a pilot agreement, but I'm not sure, Counselor Derby. I'm gonna just say it before you do. Yeah. So it's, it's an interesting mechanism. We're a city. We're not in the, you know, business of going out and fundraising, but we, it's amazing the donations that just come into the office. I mean, you know, for, I mean, who would have thought that? You know, $10,000 for, yeah. So we want to be prepared and there is a strong interest in this community to push forward on environmentally conscious, you know, municipal decisions and tools. So I ask for the establishment of these with acceptance of MGL forthwith coming.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Rist?
I'm going to make a couple of motions. Normally, we do accept donation accounts as they're presented in the same evening. Unless the counselor objects, I'd like to make a motion to accept that donation account. Move to accept, create a municipal sustainability donation account to reduce the impact of increased climate-related municipal utility expenses on the city budget and tax rate. I move that the city council approve that this evening.
Second.
Motion second for the donation account. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. The second motion is to move the two new stabilization account requests to Finance Committee for review.
Second.
Motion second to move the two stabilization funds to finance. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Back to the agenda. All right. So now we're moving into the standing committees and we'll start with Finance. Counselor Rist?
I, we will have a meeting on the 29th at 5:30 in Room 1. And one thing that I discovered, because I was worried about a BPW meeting that evening, the Board of Public Works public hearing on the sewer rates, I talked to people down in DPW, is February 26th. That meeting on the 29th is just the board deciding how to proceed on that meeting. So there's been some comment out in the public about it. The 29th meeting is not the public hearing for the sewer and water rate potential increases. That meeting will be the 26th. As a result of that, we're going to keep our finance meeting on the 29th.
Do you know what time is it?
The 26th. They haven't, that's what they're talking about on the 29th. They haven't established that. I do know it's going to be up here, but we don't know. I wanted to tell, we had a meeting. It was rather extensive and intense with a lot of disgruntled taxpayers. Our auditor gave a very good summary of how the tax levy is set. I just want to throw out some numbers. Needless to say, at the end of that meeting, I asked people that had major increases to go to the assessor for abatements. Some of them were rather large and it may be that mistakes on their assessments were made. But it's important to note that the city's market value, the entire city, we are a desirable place to live. And driving the reevaluation is a major increase in market value for homes in the city over the last three years. Even so, when the market value goes up and your values goes up for your home, which is a good thing, we can only increase taxes, bottom line, 2.5% plus some new growth, which is new buildings or something. But that 2.5% means, in order to balance that, we have to drop the tax rate. Now, on the top of that is the debt exclusion override money, which is the new school. Last year, just to give you some numbers, we raised $23,306,000 as a levy, and that included a $562,000 prop 2.5 increase. That was the 2019 fiscal year. 2020, we estimate $582,660. So it's not a tremendous amount, increase, but it is an increase in prop 2.5 of $582,000. And with new growth, the increase in the base property taxes is $24,164,725. So from $23,306 to $24 million. That's the base rate. That's what people have to understand. Now, the very large figure that everybody, if you're sitting down, the debt exclusion in FY 2019 was $1,441,000. This year, starting January 1st, it's $5,826,000. We're starting to pay the bond off. And the good news is, we pay a lot at the beginning. As we all know, when we buy a house, we pay the interest upfront. The cost at the beginning, I'm right, Val, on this? The cost at the beginning is higher and it will decrease over time. Correct? Okay. I just want to make sure I said that. So those were the kinds of things that Val brought up, along with a lot of detail, and I'm very appreciative at the meeting. Didn't really alleviate the people that got those big bills, but at least there was some explanation. The last thing I need to do is move some new business. We have a supplemental appropriation that I will ask in a motion to move to finance. And this is a first reading, and bear with me, there's a lot of salary lines. The amount requested is $81,690. And it's being requested from Free Cash to various salary lines. I'll read them, but this is to maximize the pay plan increases for individual salaries as dictated by the UMass Collin Center study. The following items were increased. The Audit Department salary line, $3,218. The City Clerk salary line, $4,569. The Planning Department salary line items, $18,713. The Building Ops salary line items, $4,245. The Police salary line item, $8,102. The Dispatch salary line items, $11,100. The Fire salary line items, $716. DPW Administration line items, $8,863. Engineering salary line items, $6,729. Cemetery salary line items, $1,897. Tree overtime, I don't know if E-T-O-T means, I don't know what that means, line item. The tree warden, I imagine, $360. Health Department salary line items, $500. Council on Aging salary line items, $1,552. Recreation salary line items, $6,285. And Park salary line items, $4,220. I move that please be sent to the Finance Committee for review.
Second.
Motion is second to move these appropriations for pay planning pieces to finance. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam President, that concludes.
Thank you. Counselor Rist? Now we move on to Public Safety. Counselor Gomes?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start with a request for 90-day extension for the following. Request to review on-street parking restriction and traffic rules in order, propose outdoor events policy, quarter cycle restriction proposal, and resident speeding concerns. That's a formal motion.
Second.
Motion and a second for extending the various line items, agenda items for Public Safety. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor P.
I had a question about some of this. And I guess it's not something urgent, but when it comes to these things, there is a, you know, and I should have checked beforehand, there's a city council rule that we have that states that for something to get introduced to our agenda, I believe Counselor Rist wrote this rule, there should be like a specific motion on, like, a specific motion that we should vote on that should have been introduced when we added them on. There's a few of these items that I think in here and maybe also in a couple other committees, that I think might be a little bit broad in that respect. And so I'm happy to do these extensions, but I'm just wondering if you could just review within, like, the things on your agenda about what actually, like, whether there's an actual motion associated with each of these agenda items? Does that make sense?
I think there is.
What do you mean by a motion? They were moved there by motion?
They were, yes. But there's supposed to be like a specific, like, we're not supposed to be submitted to say, I propose that we look at this stuff, or I propose that we discuss this stuff.
I think for these, though, that ship may have sailed since we heard.
I know. I know that it's sailed. I'm just wondering in the context of, as we continue to renew these items.
Counselor Gomes?
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with you. The first time when they present these issues that we have facing now in public The first, the first time when they present these issues that we have facing now in public safety, they came with a, with a, with a letter saying why we're looking all of this. When I'm asking for 90-day extensions, because we didn't finish our job yet as a, as a committee, and that's why I'm asking for the extension at the same, at the same as the other committees. As for the extension, where they didn't finish their, their work with any issues, I don't see why we have to present anything, because this, none of these issues are new. This is stuff that we are just reviewing. I'm just asking for the restrictions.
Yep. Councilor Rist?
One of the items, for instance, that I added, Councilor Peak, was the traffic light on Main and South Street. I wrote a letter requesting that as part of the review of that intersection, public safety, take it on again, because they had data on it. So, I think what the rule asks is if, we're not supposed to just do it, we're supposed to put it into the agenda packet and have it there, so people can read what it is that we're doing. If it's an ordinance, we did want, I think, to have as much detail about that ordinance as possible. But I was going to say to this, the South Street one, I would think that given that we've got a lot of information on it, if the Public Safety Committee or your next committee wanted to remove that, since I brought it in, I'd have no objection, because we've got a lot of data now, and things have happened. So, if you wanted to remove it, that would be fine.
Okay, one second.
I didn't finish the report yet. So, just to answer some of the questions.
Councilor Derby?
I just wanted to say that as far as having to have a motion in order to have something go to a committee, that's not my understanding. I think that my understanding, and maybe Rules needs to clarify this, is that there needs to be some background information, because by the very nature of what we do, we don't always have a motion ready to go. We need to explore, debate, deliberate, and be able to kind of parse out what a potential motion could be, you know? And so, I just want to make sure that, I mean, if that's something that the Rules Committee wants to put in place, I think that that would be something that I think we would need to debate and, and talk about further, I believe. So.
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
I'm confused and just concerned.
Yeah. Do you want to take your motion, you want to hold your motion, take it back?
Yes.
I can also just attend the Rules Subcommittee meeting.
Okay. She's going to do it in a different time. Her question.
So, I have to make the motion?
Yeah, you do.
Okay. I'm going to make the motion again for the request of a 90-day extension for the following. Request to review on-street parking restriction and traffic rules in order, proposal outdoor events policy, quadrecycle restriction proposal, and residents speeding concerns.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Extended. Carry on.
Yes. We met last night, as Councilor Derby stated before, and when he was explaining his idea of the lights to move it to South and Main. I'm going to start with, I'm going to go for the benefit of the councilors, every single one. I'm going to topic by topic, so that way I'm going to refresh the memory of everybody. For the request of the review on street parking restriction, we're still waiting for the report from the city. They're doing a study, and we're waiting for that. As soon as we get that, we're going to move on. So, basically, it's tabled now. We table it until we have that information. That's why we keep asking extension every 90 days, every time that we need it. For the pedestrian safety review, in conjunction with the residents speeding concerns, we are doing our diligence with the different cities and experts to see what we can do in our cities and our streets to reduce that. As everybody knows, we are contacting all the cities, and sometimes that takes times, and we're still waiting for it. We're going to invite some experts to our meeting to see what is working in their cities, to see if we can simulate that in our city. The proposal of outdoor events policy, we're still working in the language, because the first proposal that came from Councilor Sarret was extensive, and after we review it, is a language there that we think that we have to remove. In conjunction with the police department, we were working to see if we can work with the language to cover all the areas that Councilor Derby brought to our attention, and we're still working on it. It should be ready soon, but it's kind of extensive. That's why we're taking so long. The quadrecycle restriction proposal is a similar ordinance in, at the ordinance committee. We table it when we receive it, because we want to know what they're doing, what they're going to be, the end of the resolve of that ordinance, so that way we don't do a duplicate ordinance or something similar. So, we're going to wait until the ordinance committee finishes with that, and then we're going to decide if we're going to table it, or we're going to move on with that particular South and Main. We are going to request to the mayor all the information that she gets about the recommendation of the, of the lights, of whatever that we need to install there. And as a committee, yes, we're going to remove it as soon as we send a letter to DPW and the mayor as a committee to, with the recommendation of the committee if we need lights or not, and how much it's going to cost, and from where we can get the money. And we're going to work on that, but we want to see the report first, so that way we can take any action as a committee. And the last one is the request of the acceptance of division street extension. We are still waiting for the planning board. We didn't receive anything yet from them. I guess they met this week or something like that, but we're still waiting for the, for the letter from them, and we're still waiting for the city attorney. He's reviewing some documentation, and we're still waiting for them. As soon as we get that, we're going to take action, and we're going to move forward. And that concludes.
Do you have another meeting scheduled?
February?
Fourth.
Fourth. 6:00 p.m. Rule number one.
Okay. Thank you. Appointments, Councilor Gomez? Oh, no. Sorry.
I'll be doing the report. We had a meeting today, late in the afternoon, and had three applications, or three appointments to consider. One was from the mayor regarding Ken Iavekia, who had applied by responding to the website for a position in the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership. He had written a very lovely letter, which included lots of good questions, which showed a real interest in affordable housing. Had asked in that letter, geez, will, will it affect us if we don't reach our 10% state goal? And certainly, we need to be moving toward that. So, it showed some, some level of interest in the subject beyond just, oh, I think I'll apply for a committee. So, we were very pleased to receive that and had recommended that he be approved 2 to nothing by this, by this council. We also, should we take them all at, all at once, or?
It's up to you. We can take, we can make them.
So, let me, let me say that the recommendation is to have Ken Iavekia, I move that Ken Iavekia be appointed for a term expiring 12/31/2022 to the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership.
Second.
Motion is second for Ken to move to the Affordable Housing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same motion passes.
Second consideration was the licensing board, which the mayor has recused herself from an appointment, because either, I'm not sure if it's ownership interest or a relative who has an interest in a property that would be under consideration by the licensing board at some point. So, this was an appointment from the city council president for Anthony Corella to be on the licensing board, and Anthony Corella had actually came before us at the meeting and presented himself. He is a 10-year member of the licensing board. I'm sorry?
Zoning board.
I'm sorry. The zoning board. It says here licensing, but he is on, he was a 10-year member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Right.
And so, he was applying for the licensing board position. And we were thrilled to have him before us. We asked him lots of questions about his experience on his, on his board work, and he still seemed very enthusiastic, enthusiastic to be part of, of the city, and we recommended 2 to nothing to move this forward. So, with that, I will, if there's no other comments from Councilor Gomez, please do.
Councilor Gomez?
Thank you. I just want to add that he's been working as a plumbing for 35 years. He is a plumbing and gas inspector, too.
Oh, great. Okay.
With that, I'd like to move that Anthony Corella be appointed to the licensing board with a term expiring June 6, 2022.
Second.
Motion is second to move Anthony Corella, or to approve Anthony Corella to licensing board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same motion passes.
And we did have an individual, Scott Kavanaugh, who was, applied for a reappointment to the Man-Hand Rail Trail Committee and had come with a rousing recommendation by someone we all know and I believe trusted greatly. Barb had mentioned that she recommended his work highly for reappointment. So, we voted 2 to nothing to move this forward. Councilor Gomez? So, I move that Scott Kavanaugh be appointed to the Man-Hand Rail Trail Committee, reappointed, for a term expiring 12/31/2022.
Second.
Motion is second to approve Scott Kavanaugh to the Rail Trail Committee. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And we will have a meeting on February 5th at 5:30 p.m. Presumably in Room 18.
Three, three curves.
Yep. And we do have three.
Four.
Some new appointments to move forward, if I may do them as a group. Jason Miranda, a current member of the Telecom Advisory Committee, term expiration 12/31/2022. Mr. Joseph McQuaid. He's back. Maybe. To the East Hampton Housing Authority for the term expiration 12/31/2024. And a planning board appointment recommendation, Brenda Salier, 12/31/2022, and Austin Sanders as a planning board associate, 12/31/2020? This year?
Yep.
Okay. And those are the appointments to move forward. Second?
Second.
Motion is second to move the aforementioned nominees to the Appointment Committee for Review. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same motion passes.
That concludes our report.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Derby?
Oh, thank you. So, first, I want to start by clarifying my statement before. I want to make sure that, so, my understanding was for ordinance, when we looked at the rules for ordinance, a sample, or maybe, you know, an ordinance from another community or something could be submitted with. But I, I guess I thought it was more specific to ordinance, and that other committees could submit information that they were interested in exploring. And I think that that is the piece that might need to be clarified, because I, like, in the instance of South Street, it does kind of make sense to not necessarily have a specific, you know, ordinance submitted if we are exploring the safety of an intersection or something. So.
I was going to bring this up at Rules, but I'm looking at the rule, and I did write this specifically because we were once, in a prior term, maybe two terms ago, Councilor Derby, remember, we will get a request from a councilor to create an ordinance with no information, just, we need an ordinance to do this.
Right.
And the rule specifically says, for resolutions and ordinance, that draft of the language be considered should be presented, and such drafts should be submitted to the council clerk for inclusion in the agenda packet. And that was specifically written for ordinances and things like that, so the committee didn't do, have to do all the work for the councilor that was submitting it. So, drafts of other ordinances or any, any language should be appropriate. But when there's a broad subject like South and Main Street, I think we could clarify that, but I don't know how much more, I'm just using that as an example, how much more I could have put into that, except to say, can you put it on your radar and work with the DOT and see what we can do because of the accidents that were occurring? So, we could look at that, but I'm not sure what more could be done.
Right.
But just to clarify, the rule was specific to ordinances and resolutions.
That's, that's.
That's not what it said, though.
And that's, it wasn't super clear.
I'm sorry. It says, when the consideration of any measure by the full council, especially an ordinance or resolution, adding especially after any makes it confusing, and so I understand the source of that. But what it says in writing is that when any measure is sent, and I think there's some, I don't know how much we should belabor this, but I do think that there's some value in not just saying, we're going to talk about this stuff, and then having it sort of endlessly in a committee where the actual scope of what's being discussed is nebulous. But I guess that's something for another conversation.
I was going to say, it would be a great topic for Rules to take up.
Yeah, I probably would.
So, back to, back to ordinance, and thank you for indulging me. We did meet last night, and we, specifically last night, we looked at the open consumption of alcohol, which we are focused on right now, and we are, we have made, we've put cannabis on the back burner for this moment, just because there's some movement at the state level, and we wanted to make sure we got alcohol done first before things change. And we are very close, a couple wordsmithing things, and I think we're going to be bringing that to the full council shortly. And we also looked at Councilor Kuzinski's proposal for an engine brake ordinance. Again, we tossed around some different ideas, whether making certain parts of the city specifically, you know, prohibited for engine brake use, exempting of, you know, emergency vehicles, and exempting mountain road, because that could potentially cause a safety hazard for big trucks coming down carrying things that might be flammable. And so, we're, we're also, on that one, we are very close. And I do notice that I have a couple things on here that are going to be coming up, so I'm going to ask in the form of a motion to extend the engine brake ordinance proposal 60 days, if you wouldn't mind.
Second.
Motion second to extend engine brake by 60 days. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same motion passes.
Okay. And we are going to be bringing alcohol forward, but cannabis is going to remain, so I'm going to ask for a 60-day extension on that one as well.
Second.
Motion?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion second for the adult-use cannabis extension. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm actually not going to, even though I'm coming close on the continued review, this was something that we had left on our agenda at the request of City Planner Bag, who, as things move forward, if he needed to bring anything to the ordinance subcommittee that needed changed as applications came forward, that we would be able to address those topics as they came up. So far, none of those topics, none of those things have come up. He hasn't brought us anything to change. So, I'm thinking that after, when this expires, I'm probably just going to ask for it to be removed. But I do want to consult with the planner to make sure there's nothing on the horizon. But for now, I'm going to leave that one. Now, we are going to meet on February 11th at 6:00 p.m., and we do have some new business. So, in the form of a motion, I would like to move the request to consider zoning amendment, cannabis establishment, residential setbacks to the ordinance subcommittee.
Second.
Motion second to move the setbacks on cannabis establishments to the ordinance subcommittee. Any discussion? I have one question, Councilor Kuzinski. Is there anything in particular, like, before, I know you, we're going to move it there, and I could ask this then, but I'm just going to ask it now. Is there anything in particular, or any particular place that this is referencing, or is this a general?
It's a general issue.
Place where that is in a butter?
It's a, it's an, when we had passed the cannabis ordinance on, I believe it was March 28th, in order to get it all done by April 1st, to have some measures, it was very quick and very, we just had to do it. So, this is a little bit of tweaking with the ordinance that enables us to look at things like, well, geez, what is the impact on residential neighborhoods, in specifically, in this case, in the highway business zone? So, in the highway business zone, how are we really impacting? So in the highway business zone, how are we really impacting the neighborhoods? In fact, some of the neighbors in, at the thirty-two-acre parcel of Tasty Top had said, geez, when we walk by INSA or by, on the bike path or behind INSA, there's a lot of odors that we, we smell, that we're not comfortable with, so we're not sure that the scrubbers and the cleaners in the air are really doing their jobs that they claim to have done when they came before the planning board. Various organizations come in and say, geez, we're going to have the greatest state-of-the-art, there'll be no smells outside the building. Well, you open the door, there's some smells. And in a residential neighborhood, this can really impact the quality of life for the people who live there and for those who take walks in the neighborhood. So that's why we're bringing this forward for discussion.
Sure.
For all the counselors.
Okay. Thank you. Motion is second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
That concludes ordinance.
Thank you. Property. Kuzinski, or Zaret, but he's not here, so we'll default to you.
Well, I see there's a housekeeping measure, and I know Owen had put forth the request for inventory city-owned property, and that expires very shortly, so I would request a thirty-day extension for that, so that at least we can get to the next meeting and discuss how we want to proceed with that. And the big announcement.
Hang on, I need a second.
Sorry.
Motion is second to extend the city-owned property inventory. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes.
The exciting note is, on January twenty-eighth, we'll be having a property subcommittee meeting to discuss the dog park, because we, the consultant's able to coordinate with us, and hopefully we'll have Planner Bag there, and that would be on the twenty-eighth at five fifteen p.m. here in Municipal Building. And that concludes the report.
Okay. Thank you. Rules and government relations, there's nothing on the agenda? Okay. I think we have, we have some housekeeping for us to sign the warrants for the voting. Everything else, I believe, has been taken care of. The formation of the ad hoc committee for ranked choice voting is in progress, probably be announced in the next city council meeting or two on what that committee is going to look like. I will, could you have a motion for the two warrants? Oh, we do need a motion for that? Okay. Someone want to make a motion, then, to move to, for the warrants for this voting?
Second.
Oh, that was clever. Okay, so motion is second for the warrants, to sign the warrants for the March third presidential primary. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I will take a motion to.
Second.
You didn't know what I was going to say?
I did.
Okay, hang on. And did we have a second? Okay. Discussion?
I have just an announcement for the public. Today is the twenty-second. You have until the end of the month to submit any appeals for your tax bills, and that's important to note, you have until the end of the month to set in an appeal. Otherwise, everything stands until next year, so please do review your tax bills, and particularly if there's any questions. Sometimes there are errors in how many, how many bathrooms you have, whether the basement's finished, and these all do affect your taxes, whether there's a pool in the backyard, and these sometimes get imputed, because especially if you cannot get into the house, the assessors may assume that everyone else in the street has a bath and, that the houses have a bath and a half. So you're not letting us in, we're going to assume you have a bath and a half, when in fact, you don't have one. So that's important to note. January thirty-one, an important day.
Thank you. Motion is second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I don't think there's ever been opposition to that particular motion.
Nay, let's just sit around and hang out. You're gaveling.